It's someone we're expecting to uh.
Sure.
Yeah. And is this for being recorded?
Then it did. I just heard it say being recorded.
Okay.
But now the attendee is gone. So maybe that's.
And I'm not receiving any notification that. This Janet now, I don't see anyone. No one's emailed me.
Oh, no, Fred also has a. The ten, oh, attendee panel, I'll bring them over, I guess, right? I can do that. I need to do that with Ted, with Fred. Uh, promote panelist, good.
I don't, if you want to. That's fine.
And there's Bruce.
Oh, Bruce is here too, okay.
Right there, I don't remember. Am I allowed to promote people as I deem? Fit? Or do we need to like open the meeting somehow first before I can let a non? Official member join the discussion?
Oh, Karen's joining, okay.
Great. Hey Karen. Hello everyone, we did it, yay.
Yes, well done Jesse.
Okay, so. Nate, do I need to say official stuff to start the meeting?
Jesse, I can't hear you. I don't know if you're muted again.
Oh, no, I'm not muted.
No, he's not muted. Can you hear me, Matt Net? Apparently not.
Interesting.
You can hear me Jesse, can you?
I can hear you.
And I can hear you.
And there's no chat, so I can't tell Nate we can hear each other.
And he doesn't appear to be muted according to the symbol, symbols. Karen's muted, Fred's muted, Janet's muted. But not, not Nate. Oh, he's coming back, I think he's.
And reconnect, he was just telling me he has a new computer, so.
Oh, okay.
Learning, he's learning the buttons. Okay, so assuming I'm supposed to open the meeting. This is uh, June twenty fourth, meeting of the Amherst Planning Board Housing Subcommittee. Nate, do I have to say anything else besides that?
Oh, we could do roll call attendance.
Okay. We'll have roll call attendance, um. I'll just go in order that I'm seeing you. You can unmute and say you're present or not. Fred, heard well?
I am present.
Great, Bruce?
Yeah.
Karen? And I, Jesse Major, am present as well. And we've added Janet McGowan to the discussion group as well. Okay, so I, I don't have minutes yet from the last meeting, I'll get that up for next time for us to approve, along with these ones hopefully. Uh, we had a few agenda items, um, but I think we're gonna skip to the front of the line, these draft overlay versions that Nate sent us uh, yesterday. Everyone receive those two versions for discussion?
I did, it's not on the agenda, but so that's okay.
Yeah, well, I, I, I had put. That's a good question. Nate, is it okay for us to discuss this?
Sure, it could be an unanticipated item, I mean, the idea is that it's gonna come to the planning board on um.
Yeah.
Wednesday.
Certainly, certainly like to, I read them, at least I've read the, what I, yeah, I, um, yeah, okay, I'm ready for that.
Ja- Janet, did you wanna, that's like?
Oh, I just thought it was on the agenda, on the town webs, the calendar, so.
The overlay discussion logs?
I think so, my, am I mis, or may?
I, I, oh, you're muted again.
Oh, um, I thought it was mixed use or something, I thought it was maybe.
Yeah, but I didn't put the words overlay, cuz I wasn't sure we were gonna have anything in time.
Okay.
It's a mixed use versus apartment or dorm, something like that. So, yeah, I think it's part of that discussion, if we interpret loosely. Um, Nate, do you wanna start us off and tell us, I mean, I, I think the differences in these two are pretty clear, looking at them, thank you for highlighting it, but maybe you just wanna introduce for us?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I met with staff after the last planning board meeting, and uh, we thought it'd be good to. You know, present two options, I mean, you know, say ninety-five percent of it's similar, uh, it's really just the, um, you know, one is. Requires, it's only mixed use buildings, right? So, the overlay is only for mixed use buildings, and it has a little bit different strategy in terms of how to. You know, what percentage is, it uses actually a length of a percent of a street facade, not a gross floor area. To a certain depth, right? So we're saying seventy-five percent of the first floor, ground floor facing the street, back twenty-four feet. Um, and so then, you know, every building would have that requirement. Um, and then the other one is similar to the overlay we had been looking at, uh, where. You know, it's only mixed use five hundred feet from the intersection, and then social dormitories and apartments are allowed. Um, and mixed use, but you know, there are, those other residential uses are allowed in the interior of the corridor. Um, you know, uh, we, we had a sixth floor for both, step back. Um, we have pretty generous setbacks, uh, the right of way is actually really wide there too, so I mean, most buildings would be. Thirty-five or forty feet back from the curb, uh, road, you know, the, the road curb. Um, and that, you know, and then we clarified kind of that setback on the west side. Uh, to allow for a ten-foot pedestrian path, and so. Um. Yeah, I mean, we haven't been overly prescriptive in either of the versions with some things, and so previous versions, you know, has some really detailed, like. Every eight feet you'd have a change in plane, but. We have language saying there is this articulation, and it's really then gonna be part of the review of the project, because. I, I think it's too hard, you know, if we, if we, maybe at the end of the downtown design standards, if we have something, and we want to. Put it here, but I don't, I don't really wanna get too prescriptive right now without really understanding how that would work, um. But, yeah, those are the two, two versions.
Yeah. Great, um. I just had, I really just one question about the step back for the sixth floor. The idea will be we just review that each, with each project, rather than saying, here's how much please step back, is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I spoke with the building commissioner about, like, you know, how is there a right depth in terms of. Um, you know, any like architectural loads, or you know, building, you know, integrity, and he didn't really think so, so, um. You know, and we could have a proportion or something, I mean, we could write something in, you know, at one point I was like, oh, would it be ten or twelve feet, or? Or is it like a proportion to the height or something, but the overall height is still only, you know, we're saying that it was like sixty-five feet, which isn't much taller than what we had proposed with five floors. I think we're really saying that, you know, they can build within, within that, right? So they don't have, they don't need, you know, ten, twelve foot floors every floor, so. Uh, the overall height of the building actually isn't much higher than a, a five-story building, um, but.
Um, okay, other thoughts and questions, Bruce?
Uh, just a minute, somebody is walking in my door, it, uh, but, uh. Uh, my, it's my wife's birthday, and people are dropping in unexpectedly, uh, Karen, why don't you go, and I'll come in a minute, I'm being distracted at the moment by this. Well, I'm, I'm, I got my things in, so she can't hear anything, but I can hear all of the chatter in the, now they've gone outside, actually, I can go. Um, so, I agree Nate, I think that the, uh, especially since we've got this downtown design standards, uh, thing that's ramping up and so forth. It's pretty clear that we're in a much better position, uh, in, uh, I don't know, a few months, let's say, to do something here. And given that this is a process that we've initiating, that goes to the council, that probably goes to the C R C, that probably. Comes back to us, or this council and back to, and, you know, it's a ping pong thing. So we've got plenty of opportunity to do this and probably do it better, so I think that keeping. It more or less, uh, uh, as you've done, I think that the setback is fine, the notion that it's setback is. It says that helps people say, well, six stories, but basically it's the same. We have, we've added an extra story, but we haven't added really a height limitation, and, and the extra story is diminished by the requirement of the setback. So I think that pretty much eases, uh, it makes it possible, at least for me, I mentioned, to argue that there's no, this little or no effective difference between. Five and six stories. It puts the challenge on the designers to make it appear the same, so I, I, that whole approach of. Of, of pulling, of not having embedded standards, at least not yet, um, I support. Number two, um. Uh. Which order should I do this? Number, number two is, when I read these, I thought that. We should have a goal statement, and the question is, I certainly think it should be in the mixed use standard, and it could be in both, but. Basically, in, uh, I'm just gonna flick my screen across here to where you've got the first. Um, the purpose statement. I'm thinking that in the mixed use, there should be a final sentence that says something to the effect. That it is the, uh, the, the goal or the objective to retain a vibrant, a commercial retail. Presence on the University Drive Street, or something to that effect, so it basically says that. That, that, the, the goal of this overlay, whatever else is in there with housing and so forth, which is certainly the. The, the goal that we want to change, but what, but I think we should make a statement, at least in one of these, that what we want to preserve. Is the vibrant commercial activity on the street. I would suggest it could go into both, because I think it's, I don't think it's not a goal in number two, it's. But I certainly think it should go in, in, in the first one, and that, I think will help, cuz I, I know about you or others, I bet I've been receiving some. Emails from Kathy Shane, who's my local, she's a friend. She's also the district councillor from our part of the woods, and she's, she's been watching this, and she's got these various concerns, and I think. Both Karen and I have, uh. Uh, responded, uh, to her, but. Uh, but the conversation I had with Kathy suggests that being clear about the. The goal to retain that, the, the, the street vitality would be a good thing to put in there. And that's number two, number three. Uh. This is number four, but I'm gonna say it first, cuz it's quick and short, uh, is that. I, I think it might be something that we don't necessarily choose between these, maybe let's say we have a discussion at the board. And it's not overwhelming support for either one or the other. Um, the idea that we would forward both of these options to C R C and to the council would seem to me to be. Um, quite reasonable, and maybe a good idea. And number four is just a question, uh, because when I see, and I'm gonna slide myself across again. To the standards and conditions. In the mixed use, you've got. Um. Uh, golly, where is it? Uh, so. Oh, there it is, yes, mixed use buildings. At least thirty percent of the gross floor area of the first or ground floor shall be any permitted non-residential use. And then, the statement for. Um, oh, I think this is the mixed use one, that was for the, uh, for the housing, um.
Yeah.
Dominant, the, for the mixed use, it's at least seventy-five percent of the street. Facing facade of the person shall be any not, so one says it's, it's, it's a linear dimension of the street facing facade. And the other one is a thirty percent of the gross floor area. And I, I, so I'm interested in why there's a difference there, why is one? It's, I'm intrigued, basically, I don't have an opinion, I really don't understand, and I would like to understand. Why you've got one standard in one side, and the other standard, uh, one standard in one option, and the other standard in the other option. What's the difference? How do they work as drivers? What's the mechanics of each? So that's a question, and the other three are comments.
Thanks, Bruce. Nate, do you wanna respond to the, the last question?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I guess if others are willing to, to wait, um. I think, you know, some of it was, you know, speaking with the, you know, with staff, we were, we were, the thirty percent is what's in the bylaw, and, you know, what we've heard from a few. Uh, applicants and developers is that. Depending on the building orientation. Um, depending on how much of, you know, the streetscape there is, thirty percent actually goes pretty deep into the building, and so then they're actually, you know, they can build out a hundred percent of the building. And say they go back a fair number of feet, but they're still not at thirty percent, and so, um. You know, so we were, we were just trying something different, if we're requiring mixed use, uh, along the whole corridor, and so. Um, you know, it could be that in some buildings, actually more than thirty percent, the twenty-four feet is a minimum, and so. You know, we think about what a, if it's a double-loaded corridor, how wide a building would be, and if they want a restaurant, you know, if someone's planning for that, then it might be deeper, but. Uh, I mean, some of it is really, if we want kind of that vibrant streetscape, and I agree that we could have a different or additional statements, uh. Added to the purpose for that, for the mixed use particularly, um, you know, we think having that majority of the facade. Be, you know, um, say a non-residential use is, is important, so. The concern might be that the thirty percent gross floor area may not actually get that, right? Someone might. Although it kind of says it, they might not quite get there, and so, we're trying to be more direct, um. And, and, you know, and again, it's, we haven't ground truth it yet, but, uh.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's good to me, uh, and, and again, it's, it's an argument for submitting both of these two, because you've got two different mechanisms. One's an area limiter, and the other's a linear limiter, and. People can, it, it stimulates thought about how it can be done, and again, I don't think at this point we have to know what's right. I think we have to know we've got the, the sound process, and a, and a good, solid, discussable proposition. And my sense is that they're pretty much there.
Yeah. Great, thanks both. Uh, Karen, you're up next.
Um, can I quickly ask, I, I know, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, when did we go to six floors? Are we, have we really decided that we're gonna allow six floors? With the setback, uh, because last time I was involved, we were talking about five, and is the Barry Roberts thing six floors? Just a quick question.
The, um, yeah, I mean, it's something, you know, we had asked at the planning board, and there was not really. Um. You know, there's been some mention of it, wasn't really a big consensus, uh, staff, I thought, well, if we. Add just a few more feet to height, but say you can go to six floors, then, you know, you're, you know, it's not as if we're going up to like seventy-five feet to have these tall floors, or actually. Someone is gonna actually have to build within, you know, kind of a, a shorter, um, floor dimension, you know, floor to ceiling dimension. Um, but it's not, you know, again, this is kind of a proposal, right? So. It, it may be that, you know, six floors is too tall, we were thinking, well, especially with the mixed use one, if we're getting, if we want to even have more of the ground floor be. Non-residential, would the trade-off be then, you can have a additional floor stepped back from the facade, you know, and, and the setbacks are so big that it's. You know, hopefully it's not as imposing as if it were, you know, ten feet from the curb, right? Like I said, these buildings are gonna be, um, thirty-five feet. Um, or more from the curb, maybe, you know, even sometimes forty-five. Um, and the Barry Roberts project, I think, is only five, um, at one point, maybe in a concept, there was taller, or some initial discussion, but. Um, I think it's just five.
Yeah, I'm looking at it now, I think it's five.
Yeah.
And with setbacks though.
Yeah.
So, I've been really counting the floors around here, um, the city of Berlin around me, and, um. It's generally five floors is a, a, a good height, um. And when it gets above that, there's a big difference, it's, it's true, you can make the floors sort of shorter, but then. The living space, it gets to be more of a squat, sort of cramming in sort of thing. I personally still like five floors for, for our area, just aesthetically, it makes a big difference, I think.
Yeah, thanks Karen. Um, Fred, you're up next.
Uh, thank you, uh. Well, I, I think the, uh. Uh, Nate's suggestion about, uh. Making six floors look like five floors is frankly ingenious, uh, I'm. Fully in support of that, particularly since we are in one of the few places of town where, um. There is no, uh. Uh, residential, uh, existing residential, uh, development that, uh. Would be endangered by it, uh, so I, I. Uh, Nate, I have one question, uh, I, I think I'm in favor of the, the sixth floor, uh, the, the way you've done it. Um. What really got my attention at the last planning board meeting was your argument that. Uh, if we build it, they won't come. And, uh, that. Uh, I think is the sixty-four dollar question, and I'm wondering if you could compare these two. Uh, with that particular argument in mind.
Yeah, um. Yeah, it's, it's interesting, you know, I, I feel like, um, Amherst is a really unique, you know, even more so than just, you know, town or two over in terms of the housing demand. Um, you know, the non-residential space, you know, you know, the, I think the retail commercial space, it's interesting, there's a lot of vacancy. Um, you know, say regionally, and, you know, acute in certain areas, um, but in terms of not building it. Um, and not coming, I'm building and not coming, I think, you know, the concern would be if we required mixed use, you know, what would happen? Um, I do actually think on University Drive, that we're gonna get, eventually we'll have enough density that there's, you know, you can have, um. You know, non-residential uses, and it'll be, it'll be working, and so, you know, after the planning board meeting. You know, I, I think it was, you know, it was, it was a good discussion, I think staff thought, well, right if, and Jesse, I think made the point that if we're. You know, if we're looking at what, what do we really want there, and say ten or fifteen years, and we don't wanna be short-sighted, and say recommend something, and then have. Something in motion that we have to change quickly, um, you know, do we allow mixed use, uh, and then maybe another floor to. To balance the development and really get, you know, get both, right? Have housing and, uh, commercial retail space, because. You know, I do think that the housing piece is something, was the original driver of this, right? Can we, can we actually have enough development here? To, um, you know, take pressure off some of the other neighborhoods, and I, I, you know, I actually think that with this and. Possibly other things happening in Hadley, and maybe elsewhere in town, I think, you know, in so many years, I actually do feel like we would have. We'd see a kind of shift in the housing market in some areas, and that's, to me, that's a, a really, a good benefit of this. Uh, but, you know, I don't, I actually think that if things, say, talking about the first floor mixed use, if that stays vacant for a bit, I think eventually it will be occupied. And so, you know, and maybe that's something that's willing, that's worth waiting for, right?
Yes, thanks, thanks Nate. Uh, Janet?
Thank you, um, there's a couple of things I wanted to talk to, but sticking on the heights mixed use front, um. And the sixth floor, I guess, that's, those are three big things. I, um. I think we should, I like the idea of requiring at least seventy-five percent of the, you know, the street front to be occupied, cuz that was part of our. That was a big part of our vision, is to make it a street where there's canopies, and there's people, and there's restaurants, and daycare centers and stuff, and we do, we have very low vacancy rates. Storefronts in everywhere, but I think north.
Okay.
And so, um, I don't think that's an issue, there's a study that was done that we were sending over two hundred million dollars out to Hadley and other communities, and. I think twenty or twenty-five million in groceries alone, and so, um. You know, and then we have the world, this, the areas, the region's largest employer, and people will be literally driving, as they do every day. Out of the university down that road, and so I think the more open, more commercial and retail, the more people will use it, and they'll stop, and, you know. It become a much more vital area, so I have literally no concerns for that. Um, I do have concerns that six-story, you know, residential mixed-use buildings could drive. The medical facilities and even the grocery store out, and so. I kind of began to wonder, why are we privileging housing? Why not, if we're gonna go to five stories, why not just say five stories? Build what you need, and maybe it's gonna be an office, um, probably not, given that we have a big empty office building there. But, um, not to push stuff in one direction or the other. Uh, I always a little startled by six floors, cuz I thought, you know, I thought if Doug Marshall doesn't want a sixth floor, you know, that's gonna be. Um, you know, he had such a visceral reaction. I think it wouldn't be such a big deal if you step back from the fourth floor to five or six stories, I don't think you feel that on the street. Um, but I think if we're gonna keep giving extra stories, we've already given two extra stories with fifth floor, if it's three for six floor. Let's get something else, and so, let's get more inclusionary zoning, maybe for sort of middle-class people. Uh, maybe give a six-story, if you're gonna do a, a building that's not student housing, so you get some space for, um, you know, all the rest of us. Um, I have many friends who have tried, who have sold their homes, and Amherst looked around for a condo or to rent, and couldn't find anything that was. In good shape and not super expensive, it could be in bad shape and expensive, or in great shape and very expensive, and so. I think if we're giving extra floors, we should get something for, you know, either middle-class or low-income residents. Um, you know, and I keep on looking at that Barry Roberts development, who I really know nothing about other than the pictures, and he thinks it's feasible to build. Four and five stories, mixed use thirty percent, um, retail, commercial. With parking, and so I think if it's six stories, it's really feasible to do that, and so let's, let's not back off from requirements that are sensible, and so. I would say if we go to six stories, we need to add, get something more for the town, and I think it's really to the benefit of everybody, if we have more low-income housing there, that means that. People with, of lesser means have a place they can walk to, shop and work, you know, and get to their jobs and stuff like that, so. Um, so the sixth floor doesn't bother me unless it's just sort of like, we just, you know, why not seven, why not ten? Um, so that, those are kind of my feelings, I think we could require the seventy-five percent on the first floor. Street, but I think we should keep the thirty percent, that is the lowest percentage of any town that we studied. Um, and so it's not a big ask, and so, and people can do it, and it could be a, you know, daycare center, it could be a dental place, it could be a tattoo parlor. You know, there's just a ton of stuff, and there's tons of little stores all over the place, and it's an opportunity for entrepreneurs to come in and get a start. And so I just, I think we're, we're giving a good benefit, we're, we're dangling this very lucrative thing, we have a really lucrative student housing market. So let's, let's build the vision that we started out talking about, which is a vibrant, commercial street. Filled with trees and awnings and people and bikes and strollers and students, you know, maybe they party at night and we all go to bed. But we've already shot there, and so I, I don't think we have to, I think we, and I don't think we should go to, um, the town council and say. Here's two smorgasbords, and, you know, pick and choose, it's, it's kind of, let's go with a good vision that we, most, all of us or all of us can support. And I think if Barry Roberts can build something with thirty percent. You know, commercial on the first floor with parking at four or five stories. Anybody can build something with more, and so, and the, the last thing I wanna say is, I, and it's kind of, it looks like we're not requiring parking. For any commercial or retail uses, I, I looked at the, and that just seemed shocking to me. So. I, that was a big download right there.
Thanks Janet, um. Nate, do you wanna talk about the parking that you had in mind there?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, you know, there's no other parking nearby, and so, you know, they can't rely on, you know, downtown, we have the municipal parking district, but we have a lot of public. You know, on-street and off-street parking, we have other private lots, and so. You know, developer, um, you know, doesn't have to try too hard to justify parking. Whereas down here, they're going to have to, either they are gonna enter into shared parking agreements with their neighbors or across the street. Or they're gonna have to put it on their property, and so, you know, um, you know, driving. Um, to there, if you have mixed use or a restaurant, they, and you, you need a lot of parking, and so to me. You know, and Barry, you know, speaking with Tom about what they proposed down at Amity Street, you know, the number of parking spaces was a factor in determining. The non-residential space, and so, I think if we require mixed use, it's always gonna be the conversation, is how much parking do we need? And so, I don't think we need to prescribe it, because they're gonna, they're gonna come in with it, if, if a developer thinks they don't need to have, um, parking for their residential units. You know, maybe the permit granting board says that that has to be a requirement in your lease for every unit, which we do now, uh, for some developments, and so. The expectation coming in is, the only parking that's available might be shared parking or accessible spaces, but you know. Um, it's written into the lease that there isn't, and so you're not, you know, people know going in, um. So, yeah, I, I think that, you know, if this were in a different location, for instance, maybe we'd have parking requirements, but given its location, you know, the. You know, there's not really any proximity to neighborhood streets, in, in off-street parking, off-street parking isn't allowed nearby either, so. I think it's really forcing each, each developer, each prop, project to kind of consider what are the options nearby.
Um. Nate, you're actually making my argument for me, is that there's no alternative to parking except for onsite or shared parking. And that's what our parking bylaw says is.
It, it doesn't.
It says, here are minimum requirements, but if you can show you don't need it, or you have shared parking. You know, will, show us that, and we'll agree to it, so we already have this very flexible parking requirement. But I think what you're saying is, there's no alternative parking, so of course we're gonna put it on site, but what this requirement is, you don't have to put parking in.
Yeah, but that, but that's, but that's to the developer, right? So, I think we require a certain amount of parking per, you know, thousand square feet or seats, and. For commercial or retail, and honestly, I think that each project is gonna come in and figure out what parking they need to make it successful, and so, actually, I think in our. Our parking bylaw could be what we have here throughout town, because, you know, the, anyways, the, the two, um. You know, what we have is kind of antiquated, and so, uh.
How could we, how could the board say, oh, there's no parking requirement in your thing, you built this massive building with lots. Commercial and retail and things, and we don't require parking, so we're gonna require parking, cuz the bylaw doesn't give us the authority to do that, am I reading this completely wrong?
Or asking that they have to have, provide a management plan and information to be reviewed, and so.
I think Janet is reading it wrong and I can explain why.
Good, good, help me.
Janet, I think you're reading it wrong because you're not trusting developers to protect their own interests.
Yeah, that was my take on it also, frankly.
But it's waiving our park, all our parking requirements for retail, commercial and residential. And you're just sort of saying.
And that's why. What I just said is why you're doing that. Because we think, we think that being, I think Nate thinks and, and the conversations with staff and, and, and the people we employ to. Inform us on these things are telling us that it is not in our interests to be prescriptive because we're guessing. And we'll probably guess wrong. And if we trust the developers to protect their own interests. That those will align with the town's interests. And I'm actually persuaded by that argument.
But where do we say come in with the management plan? Where is, where is that piece? Cause we, you've gotten rid of section seven point zero to seven point zero zero five. There's no requirement for parking in. An apartment. Building. Yeah, like where do we get?
I'm not able to speak to the intricacies of the bylaw on this matter, and I would hope that there would be. Something that, that recognizes that, uh, that, 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 that we're. Uh, in a collaborative arrangement with the developer, with a proposing, with an applicant developer. To explain their interests and what parking they're providing and why that works or not providing.
Current parking bylaw, which is here's the requirement, but if you can show us that it's, the building's gonna work. There's flexibility. We'll let you waive those requirements. That's our current parking bylaw. It's very flexible.
Well, that's true, that's true. And, and.
But we're now waiving that requirement and saying, oh, we hope you come talk to us, but we have no legal authority to require any parking because we don't have it. In our overlay anymore. I don't know, it'd be nice to have a chat and say, hey, we think you're wrong on the parking, but we have no legal authority to require it. Right?
So then if the.
Well, you see, you're, 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 you're not as trusting as I am, apparently.
But I'm an attorney on.
Let me add a perspective, maybe. That means if we did add that piece from the bylaw as it is, our flexible parking bylaw, if that was part of this. Then they could still come with the proposal and it might have no parking. And it would be approved or not approved, but someone's looking at it. I think that's your point, Janet.
I would still waive the shared parking because we require a special permit for that, or you have to have a hundred twenty percent of the required amount on space. So. Really, the idea here is to have ultimate flexibility with parking. And so our bylaw, Janet, you say that it's flexible, but. You have to come in and already figure out that you need two spaces unless you can waive it. That's the difference, that the planning board could deny that waiver and you're required to have two spaces for every unit. And so to me, that's not flexible. And so what, um, you know, the flexibility actually is saying, come in and propose what you need to us. Show you your utilization, have a parking management plan and the board reviews that. And so, you know.
But that's gone.
Right. Is that in here? I didn't see that either, a parking manager.
It may have been omitted, but, um, I, it, it's, the intention is that they will be required to submit. But it may, it may have been lost a bullet or something. It should be its own bullet.
It's the second bullet under parking. Shared or leased parking is encouraged in the overlay district. Permit granting authorities shall require the submittal of any shared or leased parking agreements and may require submittal of study, of a study, provide utilization levels. So I think that's saying it will be reviewed and approved or not.
It's actually not saying that. It's just saying that if there was a shared or leased parking agreement, you have to show it to us. And you might.
There used to be a bullet, I think, that said the requirement of a submittal of a parking management plan.
Well, maybe that, maybe, maybe the conversation is around the, uh, editing and, and, and. And massaging of that particular, um, phrase in, in this bylaw.
So I, I agree with Nate about the, the special permit for the shared and leased parking. I argued. Three years ago, let's just get rid of that and just let it go under site plan review because that's too messy and crazy. But I'd be rather do that because we already had a super flexible parking plan and under it, we have been providing less parking. And so. You know, but I really, you know, you write that the developer should make the right decision and say, hey, I'm gonna put in a restaurant. So I have to put seating in. But maybe they think, oh, this is just a tattoo place and someone can jump off the bus and in ten or twenty years, it might be a restaurant. And so I just, I just think that we have this super flexible thing and just to, we don't have the legal authority to require parking if we get rid of it all. It's just not there. And if they want a management plan, a management plan for what? Just like, oh, we think that there's no one's gonna need parking or people can take the bus. Um, and if people need cars, they can go park up on Amity Street or in some neighborhood.
I'm still thinking, I mean, this is this part, I mean, this is a particular part of town. It's rather unusual. And the, and all what's there seems to work for me and I'm prepared to. In- invest in the, in the applicants being able to understand their interests of what they're trying to do. And as far as the future is concerned, we will have somewhat locked in certain. Modus operandi based on that first development. That's true, uh, I think. So, but I'm, 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 I'm not so confident that I can. Understand all of the, uh, the, the, the details of the future that, that I think that I can. Regulate beyond what we've got here. I'm, I'm comfortable letting the, letting the applicants. Driven by their own vested interests and so forth in this, in the commercial success of their. Uh, of their application. They've got a farm, they've got a lot, well. I was gonna say they've got more writing on it than we have. They've got a different sorts of things writing on it. Of course, the town has got the future writing on it and they've got their, their initial. Their, their short term economic interests. Both have got significant interests riding on this. But I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to let the developers, the applicants, the developing applicants. Drive the call on parking, given that we have appropriately edited that section of this overlay bylaw that would. Make it appropriate for this particular part of town.
So it would be, so it would be like, you're not required to provide parking, but you have to give us a parking management plan. Is that it, Nate?
Yeah, I mean, so like, you know, right now, for instance, like some developers will say in their lease that they don't require. They will actually not provide any parking for any of the residential units. Others think that every unit needs at least one space. And so. You know, based on that, the board could say, yeah, okay, if you're, if your management plan says absolutely no parking. A condition could be that in your lease agreement, you have to say that, state that there's no parking available, right? That. And so it's an upfront understanding for any prospective tenant that there isn't parking available. And so that's, that's where, you know, to me, that becomes part of the review during the permitting, um, you know, how that discussion unfolds. I'm taking some notes, so I, you know, um. You know, I, I think maybe, um, I just want to, you know, it's interesting about. We have some language in the bylaw that we could look at in terms of the requirement of a management plan or peak parking demand. And have some language about whether or not, you know, that the board would use that to. Determine a parking, you know, parking ratios or something. But I think having a standard, you know, like two spaces per unit. Unless the board's satisfied or three point three seats for every thousand square feet, unless it's satisfied for some, you know. Site designer aesthetic is not, you know, the board could say no, and then it just, it really flips the development upside down because now all of a sudden they have to require more parking than. They don't think they need. And so I would rather not have any of those strict numbers and have more of a discussion with the permitting board. And so. You know, it might take another bullet or two. To get there.
And, and don't forget, this is going to all these other committees. So I, 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 I'm not uncomfortable. With submitting something that we think needs more work because it's gonna get more work regardless.
How do people feel about asking for more in exchange for a sixth floor?
I, I like that. I mean, in principle, I, I, I'm open to being persuaded either way, but in principle, uh, I think. We are offering what we think is a, a benefit. It, it could be that the, uh, the developers will say, well, uh, board, uh, members in town, what you don't understand is that the. Foundation conditions down there are such that, uh, the, uh, that, that what you get is a, is a building in the first place of more than one story. Because the ground conditions are superior, what have you. I don't, I'm not saying that's true. I'm saying that that's a possible response that we would learn. That, uh, we are, why, why asking for more than, uh, than, than, well, asking for more might. Put us in the category of, uh, dissuading developers to, 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 to take the development issue in the first place. But, uh, if, uh, absent any overriding, uh, situation like that, I, uh. I think it, it would be nice to, uh, to be able to show particularly on the housing, uh. Favouring some, one of these, probably on both, that, that what you advocated, Janet, is something that could be, uh, put in there. So at the moment, I'm, I think that's a good idea.
I wanted to weigh in on parking. I, I agree, I actually agree with Nate. I think it should be left flexible because. Parking is. You know, that, that impermeable space is bad for the environment. And I, I see the trend here. Right now is even when, um, you have parking lots, there's a big pressure to get rid of the parking lots and put. Playgrounds and green spaces there. And you just kind of keep forcing the environmentalists, keep forcing the issue that we have to. We have to encourage people to think of alternative transportation and to push that. And, um, so. I, I know that that was an issue with the, the houses in town that they did bring cars and it put a lot of parking pressure on the neighborhoods. Like our neighborhood, that it's always gonna be a problem, but I do think we should not. Put something so inflexible that you need two and a half spaces for a unit. I think that's, that's, uh, I agree. Let's leave that a little bit up to the developers and, uh, and. Provide more space for just green space. But ask, and then I agree with Janet. If you are gonna go with six floors and I, I still don't like it. I don't like sick floors, just. I think it's a huge difference between six floors and five floors unless you can really make those floors really squat them in. But if you're gonna give something like that, then you should ask for, um, units in there that are affordable and, and other things.
Thanks, Karen. Brent?
Yeah, two things. Um, first is, uh. Regarding, uh, uh, the issue of potential. Ground issues, whether they could support, uh, a floor of that size. I, I think. The, the boots on the ground, which would be Barry Roberts at the corner. Clearly thinks that he can put five floors, uh, cause that's what he has a permit to do and it's what he applied for. And, uh. What Nate is suggesting wouldn't be that much heavier in terms of, uh, uh, ground support. The other, uh, so I, 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 I'm still totally in favor of that. The other thing I want to point out about parking. Hadley, uh, in their zoning bylaw, they have extremely robust parking requirements. And I, uh, like everyone else in Amherst, do a lot of shopping in the Hadley malls. And what I've noticed is that, uh, there's a hell of a lot of vacant parking spaces. At the Hadley malls. And I think that is, uh. Is an indication of an unwise bylaw. And, uh. Yeah, I think, uh. Better off, uh, we, uh, leave this to the market to decide. And, uh. Yeah, uh, we have got to build something here that they will come to. That's the bottom line. And, uh, that they should be able to come to in the very near future. Um, or we're gonna lose, uh, just from market forces, we're gonna lose. Areas of town that we don't want to lose.
Great, thanks, Fred. Um, I'll come my own thoughts and then I'm gonna ask our attendee if they have any thoughts to share on this topic as well. Um, just on some of the points we've discussed. I lean more towards the acquiring mixed use as a start. As I said the other night, I think it's the right way to start. And then if it doesn't work. We can always, in, in a year or two years, we have no proposals. That'll tell us where we missed the mark, right? I think on the parking front, a little more flexibility is great. I think we could build in the bullet point. Of, that there will be a review and have that review have some teeth rather than just. Tell us you're gonna put it in your lease that there's no parking, might be a better strategy, but maybe not requiring what's in the bylaw right now on parking. Um, I'm fine with the sixth floor mostly because it is such a wide. Street area we're talking about with the setback. I think. It, I think it'll be fine down there. Um, I, I especially I like Nate, how you've made the. Uh, pedestrian street a little more prominent as well. If we're gonna really try and require that as part of these projects. I think pushing back and having a little more height, especially with setbacks. I have no, no concern about that really. Um, Janet's point about asking for more for giving the sixth floor on the. Affordable housing, stuff like that. I'm kind of on the fence. I feel like this is an area of town that. Again, if, if I think we all see it at least short and medium term as student housing, hopefully long term. Which could then allow our neighborhoods to in ten, twenty years recover some of the single family uses. Um, I don't see that as a real need to require some of that in this area. Just my own opinion. I would favor just putting forward the one mixed use requirement. To the CRC rather than both groups, but that doesn't, I think it's sooner there. Fine to give options because I have a feeling this is gonna get a lot of tweaks and pushes before it even comes back to the planning board eventually. Okay, um, I see Janet Keller is in the audience. Janet, would you like to add anything for this conversation? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see a hand. Um, so I'm gonna, unless anyone else wants to make any points, I'm gonna try and summarize a little bit this conversation. And again, I think the goal was, Bruce, you wanna go ahead? Go ahead.
I only wonder where, where the, should we ask Nate to summarize because he's the one that actually needs to have it land.
Sure. I was gonna, I was gonna add two or three points that I thought needed to get into this, then bring it to the planning board. But Nate, if you want to do that, please go for it.
Yeah, I mean, I've taken about, you know, some notes. I, um. So I mean, the goal, I think staff was hoping that the planning board would vote to recommend this to, uh, council, um, this week. And then that starts the process. And so, you know, then they would look at it. You know, it's not their first reading. It's just they look at it. They say it's a zoning amendment. They refer back to the planning board and CRC for a public hearing. Uh, there's that discussion process, then it goes back to council. You know, and that, you know. My guess is that if, if planning board votes to refer it, uh, to move it along this, you know, this week, I mean, it's still a few months before it comes back. I think. Yeah, I don't, I don't know about moving both forward or one forward. I, I'm okay with either. I think I would, uh, add a bullet or two about parking. To change, maybe add a different goal statement. And, uh. Yeah, I mean, the sixth floor, I think I'd leave it in just for a discussion purpose. The, um, yeah, I mean, I think the give is that we are providing housing and it's, it's a critical need right now. You know, I don't, I don't, you know, the, the inclusionary, I suggested that I talked about that. I'm still a little, uh. You know, unsure if we can, um, how much more we want to increase that. Um, and like I said, with the setbacks and the road wide of way, I mean, the buildings are gonna be like a hundred feet from each other, across this, across the way. Be pretty big. Um, yeah, so I think, you know, um, you know, I like what, you know, Karen said, encourage and. You know, different modes of transportation. I mean, I think this is something where we can actually talk about that, right? Where, you know, we want public transit. We want, uh, bikes. We want. You know, pedestrians. And so that's what we're building this, you know, building this into this kind of overlay. You know, in terms of parking and height and stories, I think. I think, um, I think it's gonna be a conversation, each developer is gonna approach it differently. So I think that if. We require a seventy five percent of the streetscape facade to be a non-residential use to a certain depth. And they have enough space and they build in parking there, they might not actually get to a sixth floor because the parking demand for the mixed use space. Will, um, drive kind of how much building they can have and then with wetlands. And so I think it's a, you know, it's a pretty dynamic. Approach to this. I think, uh, you know, Barry's project is coming to the planning board. They submitted a site planner V application. They're also going to the, um, conservation commission. And there's a lot of disturbance to resource areas. And so I think, you know, I think. University Drive has a lot of land use constraints and I think there's a lot of layers that will be examined. will be examined. So I think, yeah, I I, you know, ideally, um, a sixth floor gets us more units. It doesn't necessarily get much efficiency for a developer or builder that happens on seven stories or higher because of building code. But what it does is it gets us more units. It may not be utilized if we require mixed use buildings all over the place because of parking and land use constraints. But I I would leave it in there just as a conversation. And if the planning board decides in their review this week that they don't want it, then we can take it out. But um, you know, without having a consensus necessarily here, I would just leave it.
Right, um. Uh, Janet's hand went back down. Janet, are you still there? Did you want to make a comment?
I actually just, this is, I was wondering if we could require inclusionary zoning likes if for students, like, so could we require that some of the, like, say, it's like we have a twenty, twelve percent requirement for, you know, buildings over X units. But, you know, if we, what if we went to fifteen percent or something and saying those extra percentages were for students? Because one of the things I've heard from many, many students is they can't afford these buildings that are going up. And so I just, I just thought like, it'd be nice to have some places for students on financial aid. You know, so I I just, I just wondered like if there's a way for some flexibility of that, you know, so we're taking care of everybody's needs, but.
I totally, I totally agree with your point. My view on that is it's again, market driven.
Yeah.
So if there are enough more units, the rents can't stay that high because they can't fill them. I don't know if we're ever gonna get to that with this project alone.
Yeah, yeah. And then I, you know, I think the, you know, obviously, if you have required some commercial parking or retail parking below the sixth floor is gonna look more look good because you get more units for that. So I don't, anyway, those are just thoughts. Trying to think of how to help everybody, you know, maybe asking too much. But I know there's, you know, I could never have afforded any of these places, and I know people are struggling to be in dorms, so.
Um, Bruce, unless it's a direct response, let me let Janet make a comment or two.
No, I'm just one, I'm asking you, do you think that, uh, do you want this committee to make any recommendations to the full board or there are five out of seven of us, so maybe, I don't know. I just thought.
I think we're recommending to Nate some adjustments to bring to the board, would be my thought, but.
Good.
Uh, Janet, I'm trying to bring you over, which I can't. I'm just gonna let you talk. Can you hear? Janet, go ahead. Janet Keller. Looks like you're muted.
Hey.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, I um, am glad to hear the discussion about the mixed use. I think that's critical. Um, and um, if any of these buildings are um, not student housing, then one car doesn't cut it as a realistic thing. This is a car dependent region. Um, and I've heard many, many people on this subject. Um, you can't ride your bike in the middle of a a snowstorm. Um, people who have babies, um, uh, it's hard to fit the baby and and the groceries on the bike. The bus, uh, I could go on, but you don't want me to do that. Um, parking is a real need. Please keep some kind of requirement in there. Um, yeah, um, I think that oh, um, if I did, I get nervous when I'm speaking, so bear with me for a minute. Um, on mixed use, I think it's critical, and I'm glad to see you addressed it. Thanks.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, um, how do the other subcommittee members feel about Bruce's question about trying to make a recommendation or just letting Nate bring this back? It's on Wednesday, two days from now, with some of these points. Don't see any hands, so I guess we're okay with just leaving it as is, and Nate, you'll add in those points, and hopefully, we can have a shorter discussion on Wednesday and move forward. Okay, great. Um, next item on the agenda. So we've got another thirty minutes until a couple of us have to depart. So Fred, you are, why don't we back up to what you wanted to bring up a couple of weeks ago with the full board, I think, about footnote M, and there was some confusion about your email, I think. So why don't you just open that discussion for us?
Oh, thank you. Uh, yeah, uh, footnote M, uh, of course, has a a a long history that uh, I was directly involved in. I uh, discussed this at uh, the in-person meetings of the planning board. I won't go through it again now. Um, it was reduced from six thousand to four thousand, which I think is unfortunate. I think we need to look at that. Uh, there are a number of things around this that uh, we need to look at. One is uh, some clarity about what happens when an an additional unit is created within an existing building. It was never the intent that that would provoke footnote M. Uh, that the, that situation would be covered by the existing twelve thousand plus twenty-five hundred rule. Um, but that's not clear, and that needs to be clarified. With that clarified, I think it needs to go back to six thousand, which uh, is a dimension that was carefully researched uh, twenty-five years ago, uh, around uh, what would uh, protect the general residence zoning district without creating a lot of uh, non-conformity? And uh, we looked at uh, uh, Victorian housing uh, situations, including both on in my neighborhood and also, and when I circulated that petition, I needed to get a hundred signatures for the representative town meeting. And believe me, I got a lot of them from the uh, uh, Lincoln Avenue neighborhood, Jesse, your neighborhood. Uh, and uh, when uh, and uh, if you look at the original dimension and look at the uh, the housing patterns, both uh, in my part of the town and also in the Lincoln Avenue parts of the town, uh, the six thousand foot uh, does well in terms of protecting that. And I think I mentioned, when I did bring this uh, of this history up at the in-person planning board meeting, uh, you know, this was, came to a representative town meeting that uh, supposedly doesn't, didn't pass zoning amendments. Well, this one, uh, it 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 came to a representative town meeting and passed unanimously. A petition uh, zoning bylaw amendment passed unanimously in a representative town meeting. And after it was over, Francesca Maltese, who was the town moderator and a land use professional, sought me out, shook my hand, looked me in the eye and said, you just saved the general residence zoning district. And uh, that's how I got on the planning board the first time. The next morning, the the appointing authority was the town manager. At the next morning, someone from Barry Del Castillo's office called me uh, on the telephone, a landline back then, uh, and asked me to come down and fill out a application because they're gonna put me on the planning board. I've literally drafted because of footnote M. That's how I started my first six years on the planning board. So uh, this is, this is an issue that the the people of the town want addressed. And uh, uh, footnote M is a powerful way, and when it's properly constituted, is a powerful way to address it in a vulnerable neighborhood. Uh, and 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 so uh, I'm happy to work with the this subcommittee and with the full board to to make that happen.
Sure. So so do you have a specific recommendation? Like what, what do you?
I haven't, I haven't written it out, uh, but I can do that uh, fairly quickly.
Hmm.
Uh, I I I could have that for our next meeting.
Yeah, that sounds like a good starting place.
There, there are, there are other things that have to be done around this. Uh, one is uh, on the issue of owner occupancy. Uh, when I brought in the subdivisible dwelling bylaw, and that that was another petition article that brought in. When I brought that in, there was no definition of owner occupancy, and subdivitable dwellings require owner occupancy. And so part of that petition article was to create the definition of owner occupancy. Well, back then, uh, Medicaid avoidance trusts were not common. Now they are. In fact, I happen to live in one. And uh, technically, that means that the building that I live in is not owner occupied on the literal text. That has to get fixed. Uh, so there's a number of things that that have to get fixed here. Uh, uh, this is, this is not that difficult to to do, but uh, I want to get that ball rolling as well.
Great. Um, Bruce, your hand was up next.
Um, Fred, this time and 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 on previous times, you've given your discussion, and it's quite comprehensive. It's a narrative history of things. But I think we have to be clear in any big discussion that about footnote M, we have to stipulate exactly what it is. And uh, and so far, that hasn't been done. And uh, um, and I, so I, we we have to get used to being quite banal and specific and and because there are people in the listening audience, and we we can't just have a a conversation uh, that that is uh, is 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 this is a narrative uh, history of the thing and so forth. We have to say what it is and and uh, uh, um, and also, it's, so first of all, it's 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 specific to the RZ RG zone. You said that, but it it was, it was in the stream of narrative, so we have to isolate that, pull it out and put it up uh, as a bullet point. I'm also not clear as to how this is different from having second principal uses on sites and so forth. Uh, because I've noticed that we have second principal uses springing up in other districts. But um, so maybe this footnote M is a, is a, is a is a regulatory condition on second principal uses. Uh, if that's the case, I think we should state that. So I want to get, I want to get quite clinically specific about what exactly we're talking about. We're talking about limiting the density on uh, on on uh, on 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 parcels, the unit parcels of land. And specifically, we're talking about limiting it in the uh, RG district. And specifically, I think it's limiting the second principal use uh, uh, thing that seems to have become uh, um, more commonly understood as a possibility. Although probably not because a footnote M has existed for so long. Obviously, there was some sense that you could do this uh, quite a long time ago. But I'd like to understand that. I don't, I'm not so much interested in the narrative history of this. I'm interested in the, in the mechanics of uh, the bylaw. And and I'm not hearing that, and I'm not understanding it. And if I'm not hearing it or understanding it clearly enough, then probably few other people are, and probably nobody in the listening audience. Uh, I think that's.
Fred, you want to add to that?
Uh, uh, yeah, I can add a little bit to that. Uh, the the uh, concept was uh, looking at Victorian neighborhoods, uh, which, including uh, in many instances in my own, uh, over, over time, over the last sixty, seventy years, uh, sin, large single family houses have become uh, um, two and three family houses. Uh, and they have, they have done so under the the ten, the the twelve thousand plus twenty-five hundred uh, requirement in the uh, RG uh, bylaw. Uh, but if you have a large parcel of land, uh, then uh, if, and you start and you you uh, create a number of buildings depending on the the size of the land. Uh, if you were to uh, permit and enumerate all of those additional dwelling units under the X plus, uh, you know, the the twenty-five hundred square feet per unit, uh, you get a density that is totally out of character with the neighborhood. And uh, the, uh, so the concept here is to uh, protect neighborhood character. And uh, the uh, a a a case in point is the one that we, the planning board recently discussed. It's now at the uh, it's now under discussion on Farring Street, uh, where they were gonna put a a three family behind a three family. Well, the the most they would get on footnote M, the way it was originally in the bylaw, is a single family back there. Uh, that is an example of uh, of how it operates. Uh, and uh, yeah, I'm I'm happy to uh, work with the all of us to uh, I don't, maybe that helps Bruce. Am I discussing what you wanted to be discussed? I
I guess, just the specifics. I I'm not sure, I can't share my screen. Maybe we can work on that for the next one.
Yeah, I can, I can, let me, I can just change that option right now.
I just pulled up the actual footnote so we could see what it is.
Yeah, I've been, I've been reading it. Uh, I mean, I've, it's been open on my thing here for quite a few weeks now.
So could I, could I, I think, I, here's my understanding of footnote M is if there wasn't footnote M in the RG, you could have nine dwelling units per acre. With the current footnote M, you could have seven dwelling units per acre. But in the, with the original footnote M, I think it would be four or five units per acre. Is that right? Am I, that's like, I I need to hang on to that because I find the language so confusing.
Right. Well, where did you see that? Or did you calculate that?
She just did the math, I think.
Well, the, the planning department did that for us a long time ago when we were looking at um, different density, like this, we've had these different density drawings saying, here's what, you know, five units or, you know, we did this for some, I can't even remember why, but there are these density showing. So they showed some lots and said, you know, under the existing thing, you know, bylaw, we could have, you know, seven units per acre in the RG, which even like an ex-planning board member was stunned by, you know? And so I think under the original one, it was four units per acre. And so I find footnote M very confusing, and I, you know, I I loathe footnote A because it's all over the place and it's super flexible. I wonder, my question for Fred is, can you get to the result you want in terms of density in the RE RG by getting rid of footnote A on on those, you know, the little additional lot and minimum lot requirements in the RG, get rid of the M and just change the requirements in the table? Could you get to where you want to be by, let's forget the footnotes, let's just put in the RG, the dimensional requirements we want to see? Wouldn't that be simpler for all people like me who just struggle? And that's, you don't have to answer that now. I just kind of, that was my thought was like, can't we just put in the dimensional table? What we're gonna see in the RG, I think four units an acre is beautiful. If it's all one building, it's so much nicer, you know? Then, you know, four buildings sticking around, but maybe not. I don't know. But I just think we should think, like, do we really want to have seven units per acre throughout the RG? Because I think over time, you're gonna see that.
Fred, go ahead.
Uh, I don't, well, I I think uh, four units per acre is uh, I I I don't, I I think that is actually out of character with Victorian neighborhoods. I don't think that supports enough. I think that is uh, overly restricted. Uh, as I said, the uh, the dimension in footnote M, and there's, there's different ways that you can get to the same results, and I'm happy to sit and work with people on this. But uh, the uh, what what we did is we looked at uh, Victorian neighborhoods in town and said, okay, what essentially matches existing density that and and doesn't screw it up? And that's how we got to six thousand. And I can walk you through lots of neighborhoods. One of the things I did when I was looking at the Farring Street development, I looked at, well, what would happen if footnote M hadn't been changed? And indeed, that would have largely addressed what's now going on on Farring Street. So I think, you know, it is one way to address a serious problem. There may be other ways. I'm happy to to discuss it. But I'm doing this from the perspective of what is the function of zoning? It is to provide an orderly transition in land use so that their development does not create disadvantages to existing ownership patterns that end up costing them value and convenience for do for doing absolutely nothing but owning property. And by providing an orderly transition and a protection of existing uses, zoning provides that disinterested third-party protection. That's my understanding of of why we have zoning. And that was the 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 concept, you know? There's other ways to get there. Sure, I'm willing to discuss them, but that's the point.
Great. Nate, you wanted to add something?
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's different ways to get there. I think the zoning amendment proposed last year with Mandy and Pat, you know, has, you know, staff thinking and then with the, you know, with different proposals, you know, private development applications around town, you know, what is the right density? And I think it's tricky because you could have, you know, one unit could be a single bedroom, right? It doesn't have to be big. So you could have seven units on a property and it would look smaller than some of the homes we see. And so, you know, I think sometimes to me, this speaks more to like amassing and, you know, we have different standards in the bylaw. We have dimensional standards. We have this footnote. We have massing standards. We have build-out envelope. And I think there's probably a number of ways how they interact. You know, what I was going to say is that I think preserving the Victorian character might actually make the housing more expensive, right? It's actually counterintuitive, but it's working against us. If we want to keep what's there and not allow infill, where does the housing go? And so I think, you know, four units an acre is not very dense. I think it's really about how does it look and how does it function? And so I think you could have maybe six units an acre with some standards, massing standards, design standards, and it would be it would look okay. At some point, maybe, you know, depending on how many bedrooms, it's really then, you know, how many occupants or the intensity of the use starts impacting. I I think it's a really big conversation. It's something that, you know, footnote M could work. I, you know, I kind of think that with the discussions in the last year, you know, it's a much bigger study is almost looking at RG and other zoning districts and say, what is appropriate density? Get rid of the footnotes and have more kind of design guideline standards. So, you know, Vermont just did that. Burlington, Vermont has some great stuff, you know, like St. Paul. And certain places are starting to go that route as opposed to having kind of these, you know, you know, just kind of numbers that may or may not work out depending on the size of a property. And so if we had standards in terms of directionality of units, of curb cuts and driveways of certain things, then I think, you know, it it's it's a much different conversation than just footnote M. And so I don't, you know, I don't know what the best approach would be, you know, maybe it is. You know, we had been doing the RG study a few years ago and we talk, you know, staff talks about every so often. And I think it's a, you know, some might argue that RG is actually meant to be some of the denser neighborhoods because it's so close to the town center. And I, you know, I kind of want to think what is the the right approach and right density? But I think it could be more than four units an acre, I think, then it comes into play what it looks like and how it's designed and all those things. And it, you know, I don't I don't know. I I'm, you know, I'd love to kind of look at this. You know, I think it's really important, especially if we're looking at University Drive. We're talking about East Amherst. We want to talk about areas where we can allow density. What do we do in some other areas in town? And so I think there's corollary zoning amendments that could move together in parallel or, you know, pretty short sequence together. And this might be one of them. And I'm not, you know, I don't know if it's footnote M. Maybe it's just saying, let's have a a a single-family duplex, triplex, you know, quadplex definition. And we are pretty strict about other standards and conditions that go along with that. And, you know, that's maybe where we go. You know, further in the agenda, Fred, you're talking about a subdivisible dwelling. To me, I don't care if it's convert dwelling or subdivisible dwelling. It's really just the number of units in a building. And, you know, maybe it's within an existing building or a new building or addition. But from a zoning perspective, you know, it's it's the units, not how necessarily how you get there. But anyways, I I I think this is a, you know, something we can consider talking about, Bruce, in terms of the mechanics, you know, is it? You know, what's the right approach?
Thanks, Nate. Bruce? Oh, you're muted, Bruce.
I must have been unmuted to begin with. Sorry, I I muted myself thinking I was unmuting. And this from and Karen and I have been deep into this for quite a few years now on the local historic district commission. But it's the the big concern of the neighborhood. I mean, there are two big concerns with, and it's not really the density so much as it's the occupants of that density and even more so the occupants of that density who have vehicles. And so we are seeing modest densities. I mean, the the Fearing Street development that was brought forward last time to the by the proposers, Kuhn, Riddle, I mean, the applicants were somebody else. But the architects were Kuhn, Riddle and Berkshire were the designers. So we've got some very accomplished and clever design teams coming. But they're not able to disguise a parking lot that has, you know, twelve or thirteen or fourteen cars because this it's it's I'm I'm referring back to the to the dimensional table here. And it and and it says additional lot area per family in square feet, and that's the twenty-five hundred. So it's 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 clearly assumes we've got families and so forth. And and families then become, you know, not more than four unrelated persons in this town. As I've mentioned, in other towns, it's three. And in Ethica, it's draconially draconially one or two. But insofar as we have a unit that can have four people with four cars, which is not uncommon, clearly, that is the problem that we're dealing with, I think, in terms of suitability of the development. And and we can probably more regularly, more more satisfactorily regulate parties and noise and so forth and behaviors than we can vehicles. And and the so maybe what we're really looking at here is regulating the parking incursions into the residential neighborhoods rather than the, not to say we're not concerned about the densities, but I think you're right. There's a reasonable dent, there's a reasonable expectation that this is a part of town that you should want to put more people into because the Victorian houses are big and they're somewhat spread out. And certainly on some lots, I mean, it's quite quite variable. Some lots are quite large and some lots are not. But those that are large, you can reasonably expect might become more dense. But the problem that we're having in the which surfaces in the local historic district commission first because they come to that commission first in order to get a sufficient appropriateness. And if they don't get that, then they can't proceed further. And we on that commission have really not got much say over parking. We're trying to make it a little bit more so. But my guess is that what needs to happen is that we need to think about not just the 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 language and the and the unit area and footnote M or something like it, which I I I'm not saying is not relevant. But I'm saying that there is another thing that possibly and arguably is more relevant. And is there a way in which we can regulate the number of cars and then, and most importantly, then enforce that regulation so that we don't see cars coming up on grass and all that? So that people say, well, we've got to provide the parking, otherwise they'll park on the lawn, which is true unless that regulation is enforced. So limiting the cars and then enforcing that limitation successfully. And that's one of the things that I've been talking about with other towns and so forth, how that might happen. But that seems to be a a a arguably more important mission or failing than the than than an appropriate number in footnote M.
Yeah, thanks, Bruce. I I agree with that completely. Fred, one more comment?
Yeah, I just want to point out that the way I do the math footnote M is not the the problem that was just discussed really because that would be seven units per acre, the way I do the math. Footnote M addresses something else. And so I I I that yeah, I I there's there's other ways to skin this cat. But one thing I I would also point out is that, you know, there's basically a space for dwelling, a parking space, that there's also a a forty percent limitation on lot coverage. So when you put those together, then there are, you know, other limits that that are going to apply here. I'll I'll shut up now.
Yeah, thanks, Fred. Okay, in the interest of time, I think we'll put further conversation of this off until next time. I did want to give space for public comment. There are two attendees. Janet Keller is still there and Pam Rooney has joined us. Neither of you like to make a comment? Okay, Pam, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. And I'm very sorry. I only only got on. I had another commitment and I could not join you at noon. And so I missed actually what led into that really good conversation. I'm so glad you're having it. I was thinking about the work that we that we did. I think it was during the forty R discussion and then the the repercussions from the Mandy and Pat zoning proposal last year that had us looking again more closely at footnote M. Footnote M at this point, according to the bylaw, only applies to townhouses and apartments if I'm if I'm not mistaken. So we still have we still have a concern or or an opportunity for more density, whichever way you want to look at it. If it is a there's there's yet another wrinkle, and that is that we have the definitions of a townhouse can be still anything, three units or more. But we've got Fred subdivitable, which is three. We've got a converted dwelling, which could be four units. And yet that's not considered an apartment. So we just have a lot of crossover with definitions and and sort of rules that apply to each of these different types. I I think it it might be smart, as somebody mentioned earlier, to really speak in terms of the number of dwelling units rather than calling them an apartment or a townhouse or something like that because it's it it really is strictly the number of units. And as Bruce pointed out, those number of cars that are associated with with each of those units. So I missed the first part, so I can't really weigh in on anything else. But I really, really appreciate the fact that you're that you're hashing through this. We just need to keep looking at ways that we can, we, you know, if we if we have to add some density in the RG, let's not, let's not let it turn some just pretty cool old neighborhoods into less livable situations. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. So only a couple of minutes left. I wanted, since we're all here, to see if we could figure out a time to meet in early July rather than wait till the end of July. That feels too far to me. I had proposed Thursday, the eleventh, but I think several people could not do that. Friday, the twelfth, is that possible? Or to other of the appointed members? Friday, the twelfth, maybe at noon? I could do that.
No.
All day out for you, Bruce?
Yes, I I may or may not have mentioned, but I've got a an impossibly hectic schedule through this month where I'm both completing the Habitat project in Northampton and unfortunately having to do a lot of unexpected work on my daughter's house in Amherst. So that's put me unexpectedly tightly scheduled through.
How about you two? Any chance you can do Friday, the twelfth? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
The following week, I'm 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 pretty open.
Oh, okay. How about Monday, the fifteenth?
That's probably okay for me.
Fred, go ahead. Oh, you're muted.
That would be better for me as well. I am going in for major surgery on the on the ninth, Tuesday, the ninth, to have my left hip replaced. But I will, I'm out of the hospital either the end of that day or the next. And then I'm I can probably I can probably sit here and participate, you know?
Well, your your willingness is appreciated for sure. All right, let's plan on Monday, the fifteenth at noon for our next meeting. And then we'll also keep the other dates that I had on there, which was July twenty-fifth, August fifteenth and August twenty-ninth, all at noon. And I'll I will send that again to everybody, one clear email, hopefully. Okay, anything else pressing before we adjourn for today? Okay, thank you all. See you Wednesday night.
Bye. Thank. Thank you.